Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for a direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. We will continue the legacy of our founders. We will be granted at this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be good for our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon. Counselor Robinson. Counselor, Mayor Rock.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
I'm present.
To mayor's business, 2.1 communication remote participation. Motion accepted, placed on file by Counselor Chasker, by Counselor Dakota. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. City clerk, 3.1. Met to the city council meeting, January 9th, for acceptance. Motion by Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Janess.
Mister.
Counselor Mercier.
Mister Mayor, before we get into the agenda as presented with the city council motions, I'd like to suspend the rules and allow 5.1 to come in so the mayor, city manager can make his, I want to call it state of the city address, hear and review, whatever you want to call it, I'm sure it'll be tremendous thanks to all the people that are sitting behind us so that they can go back to their respective duties.
Motion by Counselor Mercier to take 5.1 out of office, seconded by Counselor Yem. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Mister Manager. 5.1 official report, state of the city, hear and review. I'd like to welcome and thank all our department heads for being here this evening. With that being said, I'll pass it over to our city manager.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor, and through you to the council. Counselor, thank you very much. You are right, the state of the city. And I want to say thank you very much to all the entire council for giving me this opportunity to share just a portion, a brief portion, of the highlights from 2023. And given the fact that we're trying to go from January to December, I want to let the listeners at home know that the calendar year is important, but some of this may bleed over from back into 2022 as well as into 2024 just a bit. I'd like to emphasize a portion only because it would be absolutely impossible to list every single accomplishment that the men and women behind you have completed. As the city manager, it's been humbling. It's incredibly humbling to work with such professionals that work day in and day out to ensure that our city is better. From the start date, which was on April 28th in 2022, the city council has instructed me to take the Band-Aid off of the problems that have been a thorn in the side of the city of Lowell and embark in a new direction. A direction where we fully recognize our deficiencies, our challenges, where we all together push forward, solve the problem, and figure out a way to get to yes. We have so many partners throughout the city that I'd like to thank. I want to start with UMass Lowell, Middlesex Community College, CTI, LTLC, Lowell Community Health Center, Greater Lowell Chamber, the Lowell Public Schools, Superintendent Liam Skinner, all of our neighborhood groups, the numerous nonprofits, and especially our business owners for their guidance and for their thoughts on making Lowell a better place. Finally, I would like to thank the residents and employees of the city of Lowell, whether by email, a call, a stop in the hallway, or at the grocery store. As everybody behind you, counselors know, everyone knows this, no one is ever shy to share their thoughts and their concerns. This feedback is necessary, and it always ends with a positive way and appreciation of all the hard work that is done by the employees. That's extremely important, I think, to everyone. As I stated previously, the administration has been tasked with ripping the Band-Aid off, exposing our challenges, and turning them into a better opportunity, turning them into a better opportunity to continue to grow our city, the city of Lowell, in a positive direction. This task, although difficult and at times very uncomfortable, is going to bring positive growth, inclusivity, and strengthen the sense of what each and every one of us have, which is Lowell pride. The challenges put forth, at times, they do seem insurmountable. But with a positive push forward, we will continue to be the envy of every gateway city throughout the Commonwealth. In April of 2022, we discussed the challenges in increasing the opportunities for our city. We talked about economic development. We talked about a different way to disperse the ARPA funds. We talked about roadway projects, roadway problems, the issues that we had. We talked about sidewalk improvements. We talked about the infrastructure in the schools. We talked about homelessness, stabilizing our finances, the city building infrastructure. We talked about DEI. We talked about the human resources and the Clifton Larson Report, and increasing investments in our human capital, upkeeping our parks, increasing activity in our downtown. We had issues with trash pickup, issues in garage maintenance. We were lacking emergency management, emergency and non-emergency vehicle issues. We had the creation of a communication department, which we did not have. We transformed, and we are in the process of building a team. We have seen 25-plus new faces as department heads and senior leadership throughout the city of Lowell in the short 20 months. But once again, the final charge by this council was to increase the overall quality of life for our residents. Together, this administration and this city council has made a seismic difference in all of these areas in making Lowell the most welcoming city in the country. We will still continue to experience issues and challenges and problems, but we will continue to put our best foot forward to solve them. And we still have a lot more to do, and we will continue this journey together. I did have close to 100 slides and was going to speak to each and every one of them, which would have cost about two and a half hours of your time. I did not want the mayor, I didn't want to actually be the first person that the mayor gavelled down, so I would like you all to bear with me as we go as quick as possible through the slides that highlight, once again, only a portion of our accomplishments. So in economic development, you'll have the opportunity to look here. I've had the opportunity to meet with developers, whether it be small or large, financial lenders as well as folks in academia. Each and every one of them expressed one major challenge, and that major challenge is happening throughout our country, and that's the interest rates. However, however, we have continued to move the ball forward, and we have a very healthy pipeline through our system. We have 74 projects, both large and small, that represent $90 million in development, from the smallest things of murals for artists to total rehab of the 45 Merrimack Street. Project Pop-Up, which everyone here is very familiar with, over on Market Street. People want to do business here in the city of Lowell. We had 50 applications, five-zero, applications of people that are interested in doing business right here in the city of Lowell. ARPA Economic, the storefront, we helped 55 different businesses to the tune of over $1 million. We put out retention grants, engaged DTL with music. Excuse me. We also, when you're looking at the housing and development, we assisted families to purchase their own home. We're supporting 70 units of affordable homeownership, affordable rental and ownership programs, the passage of the MBTA, the DMU, and the Commercial Vacancy Program. And as you can see up here, this list will continue to go on when you're looking down this. As far as Mass Hire and the Career Center, they've been doing a great job. The Workforce Investment Board of Mass Hire, when you look at the number of young adults, 266 youth that created jobs throughout the summer, 7,465 individual customers were served, 210 represented themselves, identified themselves as veterans. We had a number of certificate and training programs, and the total grants, once again, the organization very well at doing this $1.1 million, helping risk, helping people at risk at youth with job placements for high school students and individuals who are incarcerated. Job fairs were held, private sector speakers came in, soft skills were introduced. Also, our young folks were introduced to different types of careers. We had a pilot program of a local company. People talk about transportation problems and trying to get people back and forth to work. Well, you know something? They're in the process of doing this with Q Ride, where right now, we're trying to move people back and forth for only $2 a ride. On the infrastructure side, this is one of the pieces that I believe the entire council and all of the city of Lowell was ready to move forward and try something different. Right here from the Department of Public Works, increased investment in bridge and roadway repairs. This is what tells the story. $3.95 million in actual money was spent in FY '22. In FY '23, starting in FY '23 with the budget that we all put together here, we went to $11 million of actual money spent. By the end of FY '24, this is why I say we're going to bleed in a little bit from a calendar year into a fiscal year, we're going to be to $13 million. This is where our investments are going. This is what I believe people are looking for. And as you look at the engineering side, you can see what is happening, with total paving being 1.7 miles, micro-surfacing 3.1 miles, crack sealing 23 miles, sidewalks for 4.3 miles, 88 ramps at 178. This investment is something that has never happened in the city of Lowell, and this has happened because of this city council. The sidewalk assessment is currently on the website. Our roadway assessment will be on by February 1. Central Street, as we know, has been completed, and we're hoping that the Beavis Street Bridge is going to be completed by summer of 20, at the end of summer 2024. I also want to remind everybody, looking at the crown jewel that each counselor has spoke to me about, and that's the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. The amount of work that we've been doing over the Lowell Memorial Auditorium to make sure that it continues to be the crown jewel of Lowell is going to be something that we're all going to be extremely proud of. Moving on to transportation, citywide 25 mile per hour. The education on this is going to be starting soon. The implementation is going to be early summer of 2024. Mass Works Grants, that total of $4.7 million that is designed for safe streets, designed for pedestrian and sidewalk improvements over to the HCID. We've put together traffic calming. 1,100 crosswalks were painted in 2023. All the long lines, all the shoulder lines have been completed on all of our main streets. One of our highest accomplishments, and one of the things that I am so proud of between our transportation and DPD, is the fact that we put in for the Raze Grant. When we had the discussion on the Raze Grant, we talked about what we should put in for. And you know something? This team, our team, swung for the fences and got $21.4 million. $21.4 million, which will be going towards Broadway, the Broadway Street Bridge, Market Street Bridge, Lawrence, and the Swamp Lockside, excuse me, Pedestrian Bridge. As far as our parking department, this has actually been a real challenge. We successfully integrated 142 new kiosks, but as I stated, it was a challenge. We had things that were not working, we were losing finances, but I was very happy to say that we finally got it done. And in this particular piece, we have three languages that we're dealing with right now, which is English, Portuguese, and Spanish. We are working on Kamai, and that should be done sooner rather than later. That's something that's been a little bit of a problem for us, which I know that some of my friends that know the language, it is difficult. It's difficult to get some of the caricatures, characters correct. So we also created, on Lowell Telecommunication Cable, thank you very much, step-by-step video, which has also been translated. Another piece that this has happened with the parking department is the dynamic pricing. The dynamic pricing is something that we're going to be introducing to everybody when special events are going on throughout the downtown. When we get to wastewater, I thought this was important to set our performance indicators, and we want to start to measure things as we move forward. It may not sound like a big deal, but truthfully, 276 catch basins, manholes, were completed and repaired. And if you're looking underneath the number of catch basins under the photo, we have close to 6,400 catch basins and 8,700 manholes. That is a testament to what is happening over at wastewater. The catch basins that were cleaned, almost close to 3,000, 2,947, which is a 90% increase over the last two years. And once again, if you look to see the number of catch basins that we have, this is something that local flooding, people complain about, and our wastewater group is out there making it happen. The sewer and the stormwater pipes, video inspected, 303,000 feet, pipelined, 10,000 feet, pipe installed, 1,454 feet. Sampling and inspecting of drainage outfall was up 400% increase compared to the two years prior. Looking at the total grants that they received over in wastewater, ISO 14001, the AMAs certified, for 22 straight years. 22 straight years tells you the professionalism that we have over at our wastewater department. The NACWA Silver Award for permit compliance. We also were lucky enough to pick up two new vacuum jet trucks and a pipeline assessment. Thank you very much to ARPA. And our water utility, once again, it shows consistency and people that are getting the job done. For the 12th consecutive year, we did win that Fluoride Award, $6.3 million to the Pawtucketville Boulevard redundant main, water main, which I know every counselor has talked to us about, and this is an issue. There is a big issue over there, but the fact that we are putting redundant mains together, this is something that I think we should all be very, very proud of. The entire system, 215 miles, has had leak detection completed, and we now have that information. We increased the water flow, fire protection because of the Beavis Street Bridge. That is going to be extremely important to the folks over there in Centerville and Pawtucketville when it comes to that water flow as well as fire protection. It's interesting, with the lead 340, lead lines, we inspected 342 lines to only find 12 that were detected. That was very interesting to me, I thought it would have been more. The truck, as far as new vac truck with ARPA, that is something that is vitally important. We also completed over 4,400 backflow prevention tests. And one of the best things I would have to say is the naming of the Stackpole Street Station, which I do say is a wonderful honor to a dear friend, Mr. Dick Prasad. Getting to the Lowell Public Schools, FY '22 shows we are $8 million over our net school spending requirement. We are committed, each one of us here today. I know that the council is committed to ensure that we continue to make, to meet net school spending. And we want to thank the legislature for their commitment in funding the Student Opportunity Act. Since FY '22 to FY '24, the Student Opportunity Act has increased Lowell Public Schools' budget by $50 million. Now let's remember, that $50 million also increases our formula and the city's obligation automatically. There is no question, as I stated earlier, that this council and this administration is committed to always meeting our net school spending, always. That has not happened in years past. However, with the increased dollars coming from the Student Opportunity Act, it does give the city an opportunity to reinvest in schools as well as city facilities throughout capital investments. Unfortunately, as we all know, capital spending is not counted towards net school spending eligibility. But you know something? We've all talked about this. We've talked about how important it is that the learning environment for children in our schools is nothing but the best, and it's critical in this environment. But it's important to always point and see that the city of Lowell consistently is spending well above what is required of us for net school spending. Here is a breakdown of school and city building improvements completed throughout 2023. If you could take a peek, it shows exactly what this council has been looking for. We are taking this extremely serious. You can all look to the boiler replacements, the unit ventilation replacements, the retro-commissioning, which basically brings a particular piece of product up to standards. You can look at what happened. One of the things that I would say we're all most proud about is the preventative maintenance that was completed. Preventative maintenance, unfortunately, we were seeing that some of these units were not touched for multiple years. But under this city council, under this city council leading the way in the administration, these are some of the best things that have been happening throughout our school system as well as in our cities, our city systems. In 2024, as I talked about, that bleed over into the fiscal year, here is what to expect when you're talking about over at the Bartlett School, City Hall bathroom upgrades, exterior door replacements, the Paulette Memorial Library, so on and so forth, Lowell Memorial Auditorium, the jewel that we had talked about, the pine arch and the moody replacement of boilers. This is another $6 million that we will be spending throughout the schools and throughout our city to make sure that our infrastructure, our buildings are where they should be. And in regards to the capital investments, which I would have to say we've been very good at with the MSBA roof and boiler replacement programs, this is something that I, I'm very proud of with what DPD and DPW does. When we're talking about looking under every rock, trying to get every dollar available, the Accelerated Repair Program has been nothing but unbelievably great to us, to be quite frank. When you look at the numbers there, they're astonishing. When you look at what has been going on in the savings, because our own DPW workers are translating some of this work into savings, this is something that each and every one of us, I believe, should be very, very proud about. This is something that the council has been on since I got here, once again, a mere 20 months ago. And I think that when you start to see the number of pieces that we're putting together, it's something that each and every one of us should be proud about. The next thing that didn't make the slide is the Pawtucketville School. I know that every counselor was there, trying to pay attention, paying attention to what's happening over in the Pawtucketville School, but it's important to note what has happened at the Pawtucketville School. The two new boilers which were installed in the last three years, the replacement of the mechanical equipment, the Phase 1 of all the controls that were upgraded to HTML platform, which is going to assist us. Phase 2 of those controls, a work in progress. The roof replacement at a minimum is going to be at the gym, and that's going to be from fiscal year 2025. Lowell High School, I wish we could talk all night on this, but each and every counselor that is before me is keenly aware of all the updates. Your involvement is second to none. Every counselor here is always in touch to find out what is happening, what can be done better, but this gives us a very, very brief synopsis. And the reason I didn't get into it as much is because every counselor here knows it so well because you're studying it every single week. So I want to thank you for that, for saving us a slide or two. The next piece on sustainability, once again, something that this council and this administration has really been pushing for. I truly believe this department will prove to be one of the most significant creations in the year of 2023. When you start to look at the total gross awards, the total unit incentives, and launched the first network geothermal pilot with National Grid, there were 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and the city of Lowell had this opportunity. Develop an urban forest master plan to help address urban heat islands. Complete five distinct energy conservation measures at 30 different facilities. You can see the reduction of electricity use, reduction of natural gas use. When you're looking at the awards and recognition, they're numerous and they continue. And someone actually made a comment to me saying, this department was just created, and look at all the wonderful things they were doing. Well, our department over at Planning and Development and moving over DPW, they had been doing this for quite some time, but when you start to look at other cities and towns, looking to us as a climate leader, I think that's something to speak about. When you talk about renewable energy and the current solar capacity, which is here right before us, of 9,290, this is another piece that this council and this administration is moving quickly on. But you know, many times, people overlook two vital steps. The first vital step is securing the smart block incentives. Why? Because if we don't have these smart block incentives, the economics of any one of these projects that are up here may not simply work. The second most vital piece is the interconnection. What the interconnection says is you can basically put something on a roof to ensure that the load is going to be handled by the local lines. And you know something? Once again, a lot of people talk about trying to move forward with any type of renewable energy, but if you do not have the smart block incentives, which we've secured, if you do not have the interconnection, you simply won't be able to connect. This is something that I have to say, our Sustainability Department has done a fabulous job in making sure that all, everything is in line and we're ready to move forward. When you talk about public safety, it's probably one of the top three, depending on who you're talking to, that people really feel comfortable with. And our public safety is honestly second to none. When you talk about the Lowell Police Department, you're talking about consummate professionals who spend their life, who spend their entire shift ensuring our safety and engaging our community in a productive and a positive way. When you look at the slide, we're not talking about things that are happening on the street right now, we're talking about the positive presence that our Lowell Police Department has, whether with flag football, boxing, expanded learn-to-swim programs, the Lowell Youth Outreach Events, movie nights, Heroes and Helpers, and this is something that cities admire. Every city should strive to have the professional men and women that work throughout our police department. On the second piece, I want to discuss the Lowell Fire Department. This administration and this city council has supported fully funding any type of budget to ensure there are no brownouts due to financing. The only brownouts that we have in this city is due to equipment failure. And you know something? That is changing. At one point in time in the ARPA discussion, we were talking about spending $6 million towards fire equipment, and this city council told me it wasn't enough. We came back, and as you all know the story, we are now purchasing $10 million of new equipment. This apparatus, and I've talked to the chief about this, we're cautiously optimistic we'll see some of this new equipment in 2024 going into 2025, and we're very excited about that. But that just didn't start there. We also purchased four new service or administration vehicles for the Fire Department. We also have purchased two other pieces of equipment, which are going to serve as an engine that was put into service on High Street, also an aerial ladder, which is going to be used as a spare. We're hoping that this comes this week. I want to point this out and thank Chief Sharon, Chief Keane, and Deputy Normandin for their quick action to secure needed vehicles, and a special thank you to the mechanic shop for keeping our safety vehicles in operation while we bridge this gap. This is vitally important. This will not happen again in the future. I know it because of this council's dedication to making sure that these pieces of equipment are up and running always. When you get to the quality of life and health and human services, when you start to look at the total grants awarded of $1.3 million with the contact tracing, tobacco control, substance abuse prevention, those are all great things that help our community. But when you start to look at the Lowell Community Opioid Outreach Team, as we all know as the co-op team, try to take a look at the total encounters. When people are saying the city of Lowell is not pulling its weight, they had 1,842 total encounters. 1,335 were unique encounters. What does that tell you? It tells you that they're going back and doubling back to talk to people, to make sure that overdoses don't follow, to make sure that knock hand is disseminated. Weekly and seasonal vaccine clinics are offered, 193 flu vaccines administered, as well as the vaccine for COVID. We did host four unwanted medication disposals held throughout this year, and when you think about the poundage that was collected, 275 pounds and 325 pounds of unwanted sharps, that right there tells you the story. Overdose awareness observance, as well as domestic violence vigil was in partnership. As far as the homeless initiative, I'm very, very proud to say, this is the first time, to my knowledge and to most people that I've been talking to, that this city council wanted to make a change. The administration was right there with you. We are meeting people where they are for their health concerns. Every Friday, and you know something? It's happened every Friday where our team continues to go out and to build trust and to make a difference in our community. And I think when you talk about people who are homeless, people who have an addiction issue, it is true, we have to meet them where they are. And our Health Department, the Health and Human Service Department, has been doing a fabulous job, as well as the ongoing partnerships with our Hungle Homeless Commissions, the Housing Meetings, the Lowell Provider Meetings, and many other individual homeless pieces. When it continues on to Health and Human Services with the Paulette Memorial Library, you start to realize how much Health and Human Services actually covers. We're looking at the Paulette Memorial Library, one of the biggest pieces, I think, that everybody was so excited to see was obviously the Bookmobile. It's a fan favorite, it's been throughout the city, and people are really loving the program, and later on will be introduced to our new executive director. In the Rec Department, as we had stated earlier, it was supporting 38 programs for youth and adults with multiple activities, aquatics, special events, 1,722 children are registered in all of these programs. Like I had stated earlier, there's 272 youth that were hired. This past summer, if you look at how many breakfasts we're handing out and lunches, that is something to actually really, truly be proud about. The Falls Health and Wellness Area is a boarding house park, it included Zumba and onsite childcare. Of course, as many people know, 2023 was somewhat of a wet year, and it seemed as though every time we held some type of class out there, we got a little every time we held some type of class out there, we got a little bit of rain. But this is something where we're trying to open up our parks to ensure that people feel welcomed and they want to stay here in the city of Lowell to enjoy. When you talk about veteran services, our hometown hero banners, and I want to say thank you because that's a real celebration and an honor, the POW MIA. This is something that the council had come to me and said, is there something we, something different we can do? So with the missing man table that we created and unveiled at City Hall, we, we found local people right there, KS Jarvis Cabinet Furniture, Jeff and Dale at Elephant Memories, and Jessica over at Jess from the north. All of this is really, it's not only interesting, it's honoring. It's honoring our veterans in a different way. If you come up and walk into the City Hall, the way I believe that our veterans, our POW MIA, as well as this council has looked at, I think it's our inspiring. When you look at how beautiful it is and those lights consistently stay on so that we truly never forget. And of course, in November, we broke ground in a veterans, veterans park up in Belvedere, and we were waiting for that to be opened. In regards to the senior center, the senior center is the love of every council here. So many things are happening over at the senior center with daily meals and programming, elder mental health outreach teams. You know, for the third year, the senior center was granted $133,000 grant from Mass Council on Aging, and the senior center opened its first exhibit, which I thought was wonderful, for artists over the age of 60. And if you had the opportunity to go to see it, you'll see some beautiful artwork, and it's something that I believe will be continuing in the future. When you look at DDS, the Division of Development Services, the Managers Impact Team, daily, our friends and, and hard workers over at DDS are really making things happen throughout the city. But when you look at the Managers Impact Team that we wanted to comprise over there, it was a proactive and positive approach to addressing compliance and the practices of accountability over punishment. We had people walking, walking the streets in tandem on Tuesdays to make sure that people understood what was going on. We were trying to catch people while they were home to let them know that the city of Lowell is here to help you, the city of Lowell is here to, to assist you, but also that you have a responsible, responsibility to your neighbors and your friends. And I would like to say that I'm, I'm very happy with what's been happening over there with all of the, the 20 visits that happened with 283 properties without COIs that were brought into compliance because of this walk, because of the different time of the day we went through and walked, and also investigated 290 building code compliance, which currently right now have all been resolved to date. The next piece on the DDS piece, your inspectors issuing 2021 new, new food issue permits, which I think is something to be proud about, because we talk about the culinary taste that we have here in the city of Lowell. And when you talk about the accepted registrations of vacant and foreclosed, foreclosed properties, that's up to 51, unfortunately, but that's showing that we're doing the job. Building and trade related inspections, the building electrical and plumbing, building code compliances, the sanitary, sanitary code for food establishments and sanitary code complaint inspections for minimum maintenance, all of this is stuff that is happening over in our DDS, and we're very proud of what they're doing to keep everybody safe. In regards to our open space, we're one of the first municipalities, which everybody, everybody knows this, and this is something that I think everybody should be very, very proud about. When we're talking about the alternative augmentative communication, we're one of the first to put this together, and it's a tool to aid nonverbal communication at all our public playgrounds and swimming pools. We're also honored with an American Planning Association, Massachusetts Chapter Planning Award for Cambodia Town, the neighborhood plan. And the three playgrounds that we had renovated with 900, over 900,000, close to $1 million, Calvary, Crowley, Kittredge Park, very excited about that. I believe everybody is driven by the self common, with phase two is now complete, including the installation of the irrigation, the multipurpose athletic field. We're going to be very, very happy with the phase three design, which is currently underway. Furthermore, when we're discussing Department of DPD and the Community Development, the Community Development Block Grant and ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant recommendations were voted by our council in July. You can see a number of people that are here, a number of organizations that continue to assist our city, to continue to assist our city in so many ways to make our city great. CDBG and ESG for the local fiscal year 2025 was opened, and the applicants in November, December of 2025, and that stuff is now currently ongoing. But when you look through the list, it's a list of who's who. Who is making things happen throughout the city of Lowell? Who is helping all of our residents? And from the Office of the City Manager, the Cultural Affairs and Special Events. Cultural Affairs and Special Events is probably one of the main pieces that the city council wanted to focus on in making Lowell the HUD of activity, of special events and culture. The first piece, when you talk about public art, you talk about public art, the Mythmaker, you talk about the Night Watch Woman on the Riverwalk, which brought people from all over cities and towns to look at the beauty. It really did, facilitating the transfer of Black Joy to the city, which is absolutely beautiful. The beautiful gateway to the city, I-formation murals over by the Hunts Falls Bridge. How can you not go under there and not smile and have a good day if you've seen it? It's absolutely incredible. And increased accessibility to art, and I know there are many, many adults that are in this room that ran through those, those musical and balls that lit up for every single time they left for work, left, left work to go home. And you know something? That's stuff that brings joy to people, and that's important when you're here in the city of Lowell. The Cultural Affairs and Special Events, the production and the facilitation, when you think of the number of things that our case office has been doing and continues to do, from the Lowell Folk Festival, 22 flag raised and 17 processions, 11 road races, including the Boston, excuse, Boston Marathon, excuse me, the Bay State Marathon, I think it's very impressive when you start to look at the number of pieces that are happening in and around our downtown. The city, the city council has spoke, they want more activity, and, and the Office of Case is giving that to them. The next piece right here, new events and initiatives with the Lowell Youth Baseball and Softball League, I think there were probably better than 1,000 people there that day, and it was welcoming to our downtown, where we had an Earth Day cleanup, the spring cleanups, the Lowell Busker Series. More people called me and texted me and to say, hey, do you know you have two or three people downtown playing music? And I said, yes, I do. And that Busker Series, we're going to continue. Why? Because I'm a firm believer, as this council is, that music and food bring people to be able to relax and enjoy our downtown. But we also formed our 2026 Bicentennial Committee, which I know many council is very interested in, which we are going to be kicking that up. And the first community menorah lighting on the first night of Hanukkah, and the Down Home Holiday Concert, which I have to tell you, was bearable for the first hour, then it just got way, way too cold. So we're going to try to look at different things to engage the downtown and very happy with where we've been going with that. As far as communications, this particular piece, it's kind of interesting that the fifth largest city in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts did not have a communications department. It was a top priority of this city council, as well as this administration. We all know the challenges of getting information out, whether you're on Facebook, or whether you call it X, or whether you call it Instagram, and all of these pieces, you'll see it up there as to what we've been doing with our Facebook pluses, the Instagram, our Twitter or X, the engaging local and regional media partners, and I've heard nothing, absolutely nothing, but positive responses from all of our media partners. But working in our community with organizations, organizations such as the CMAA, CBA, and MAPS to translate more public facing material to Camer, Spanish, and Portuguese, is something that this council and this administration is going to continue, because it's vitally important to make sure that everybody feels welcome in the city of Lowell. And we're going to increase the frequency of posting to the city websites and like Lowell. Going to the next piece, another land breaking piece, I really truly believe this. The diversity, equity, and inclusion, the top success and a top priority of the administration in this council, and I think that the most telling story is the Human Rights Campaign, where our score, when I'd first gotten here, was originally 50%. And councilors brought this forward, and because of our DEI team, in just a little bit more than a year, we increased from 50 to 91. And we're only going to go higher. But the fact that this has been happening here in this city, and we did it in such a short amount of time, goes to the professionalism and the men and women who work for the city. This is very important when you're talking about the Juneteenth, the Great Aloud Pride, One City, Many Cultures, the culinary celebration, where we just had an open party, we invited 15 local restaurants and raised 416 pounds of food and $4,000 in donations. But this is all about being a welcoming city, making sure that everyone feels welcome to be here, happy to be here, and to grow, to grow a family or a business here. Reinvesting in our workplace, that's something that this council and this administration has pushed forward, and I'm very, very happy and very proud to say it has, it has been happening. We had new, new leadership training for the department heads who sit behind you. The department heads have all told me, we've talked about what has been good, what has been bad, what has been working, what is not working. And we have honest conversations where it's not, yes, Mr. Manager, that was great. We have currently right now graduated two classes from the Leadership Management International Workshop. And I'll tell you, the interesting thing about that is, there are people that want to take this, there are leaders behind you, there are department heads behind you that want to take this into their department to make the appropriate and necessary changes. This stuff, what we're talking about is reinvest, reinvesting in our workforce. This is something that has been pushed by this, this council, and it'll be implemented by, by myself as well as the rest of the team. We've also worked with Middlesex Community College through our DEI initiative, and that is something that I think we're all very, very proud of. We have touched upon every, every department and almost every employee. We're, we're working towards every employee with vacations and whatnot. The next piece with our finance department, what else can be said when an independent third party turns from standard emporers and cites very strong fiscal management? That is something that when I got here, we talked about, $14.3 million in our rainy day fund, $7.8 million in our free cash. There are many other pieces here that I think that people would be proud to, to talk about. The unanimous approval of our FY 2024 budget, including water, parking, and wastewater. Councilors, I know that this stuff, this particular piece is not easy. We are changing things because this is what people want, and this is what this council wants. In regards to human relations, in the HR department, it's very important that we, we're finally getting to a part, a place where we're eliminating paper-based applications and allowing hiring managers, managers to access and review applications for faster turnaround. We realized that we're missing people because we're just a little too slow out of, out of the box. We need to make sure that our hiring managers, which are the men and women behind you, have all the information necessary that they can immediately make phone calls to find out who they want to hire, because this is a hot market, as we all know, and we want to make sure that the best people are coming here to work in the city of Lowell. We also revised the new hire packet and employment application with our chief DEI officer. We implemented an exit interview process and a form for employees leaving city employment, improving recruiting efforts, which I have to say, thank you very much to Mass Hire, to make, to making that happen, because we've seen a difference. And we've even had refresher trainings for managers on city hiring process. But the customer service average, 280 processed annual hires, 108 benefit enrollments processed per month, 35 phone calls per day, and 10 office walk-ins per day. That human, the HR office, if you ever get an opportunity to go down there, people, their heads are down, working hard, working diligently to make sure that all of the employees throughout this city have the opportunity to change things and make a difference in their own personal lives. The ARPA office, you know, it's something that when I first got here, we worked to change and we worked to fully staff it up. The ARPA office provides so much work, so much assistance to all of our department heads. I, you know, I have to say thank you because this is a once in a lifetime. With all of our department heads, our citizens, our nonprofits and businesses, they have so many different things going on, but yet they keep a, a cool head and move forward with all the different grants that they're in control of. People have asked about, how do we know about this? The dashboard that this council wanted is up and running. So we want to make sure that people know that. This is a very exciting time again, and we're coming to the end of 2024, where we'll have to make all of our commitments, and I'm quite confident that our ARPA staff will be very, very happy with that, because we'll just continue to move forward. In regards to community responsiveness, Neighborhood Liaison in my office has attended 39 neighborhood meetings, and I would wonder if there was 40, because she's probably made every single one of them. Myself, the Assistant City Manager, goes when, when we can to make sure that our neighborhoods, which is really the lifeline of this city, we want to make sure that they're satisfied, they're happy, they understand that we're here listening to them. We host a community listening sessions at City Hall, which we are going to continue again into 2024, with the DEI Consortium, neighborhood groups, and different ones that are open to the public. And on our Facebook piece, we did receive over 100 messages and responded on a Facebook Messenger. But I think one of the pieces that in regards to city council motions, I want to say thank you very much to all of the department heads for all the hard work that they've put in. They've responded to over 707 motions in a two-year cycle. And if you look at the two-year cycles, typically responding anywhere between 450 or less. And this, the men and women behind you, almost close to double that. They're working hard, making it happen, and answering the administration and the council. And I just want to say thank you very, very much to those men and women that are here. Getting close to closing time. The Department of Planning and Development has been working extremely hard on Lowell Forward. Lowell Forward's final public workshop took place in October during a Community Health Outreach Program Dinner. We've had over 65 community members shared. Matrix will be, will serve as a blueprint. The most important piece about this whole, this whole exercise about moving Lowell Forward, I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, and the Assistant City Manager is 100% in favor of this. This document is going to be a living, breathing document. The document that will be put forward, put forth to you by mid to end of February is a, is a product of unbelievable effort on behalf of Giovanni Baez Rose, our Assistant City Manager and her staff. This is something that is going to set the city of Lowell apart. And rather than taking it and putting it onto a shelf where it's going to collect dust, we, every month, are going to hear from the professionals that are seated behind you about how they are reaching towards that goal, that 10-year goal. We hope to have at minimum two department heads coming in for an informational, and then those same two department heads will come in approximately six months later to discuss where they've been, what has happened, and where the issues are. This to keep our city council and all of the citizens in Lowell actively engaged in moving Lowell Forward. In closing, I wanted to bring back something, bring back the very words when I first spoke here before this city. To the city council, these are the words that I spoke back in March as well as in April. The words "thank you" honestly will never be enough. You've entrusted me with moving our city forward. I thank you for your support and your confidence in my leadership. Our opportunities here in the city of Lowell are endless. Together, we will continue to make Lowell a place that welcomes everyone, a place that is safe, clean, and has a great educational opportunity, where you can raise a family, you can grow a small business. Together, we will make Lowell the envy of cities around the country. It's because the residents deserve no less. To the department heads and the employees, thank you for your hard work and your dedication day in and day out. You truly are the backbone of this city. Our job is going to continue to be difficult and challenging, but after talking and working with all of you over the past year, I know that together we are up for the challenges that continue to lie ahead. You will continue to see me in your offices, at your job sites, which I know I make people jumpy when I do that, and I'll welcome the new ideas, the new ideas in challenging the status quo, that every day our city will get better and better. I'm excited to start this new journey with all of this, this council and all of you once again. I believe with the energy that each and every one of us possess and the experience of this city council, that the sky is truly the limit for the city of Lowell. Together, we will chart this course. With our work ethic, our energy, our enthusiasm will power us as it has through any obstacle. And over the past 20 months, we've found plenty of obstacles, and I would like to say that we have gone through them. We will fail, as I challenge each We will fail, as I challenge each department head. We will fail, but we'll continue to dust off and get back up. We will learn from our mistakes, and those mistakes will make our success even greater. This is our time to continue to grow our city. And, the interesting thing is, the quote that I used, this gentleman is in the news again. As Coach Belichick would say, "There are no days off." It's time to do our job. Thank each and every one of you. God bless all. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the manager and his team, all the department heads, once again, for that presentation. Well done by everybody. I think, with that being said, we'll just take a quick two, three-minute break, and we'll come back and start the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we have practically all of the department heads here, I think I'd like to take this opportunity to say, this speech wouldn't really be that powerful if it wasn't for the people responsible for the city manager making such a speech. So to each and every one of you here in the room, I'm very, very grateful for your dedicated, hard work. Thank you so much. Please know that it never goes unnoticed. We don't say it all the time, we don't say it every day, but we're very, very proud of each and every one of you. I know that you do a tremendous job, and I'm glad that you're here that I can be able to say that. Thank you, Mr. Manager. That was an excellent, I'm exhausted already, please. I'm tired. That was a lot of work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mr. Manager.
Councilor Chow.
In addition to, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. In addition, just to go off Councilor Mercier's comments, I think the department heads also deserve a standing ovation and applause as well.
Yes, yes.
At that being said, we'll just take a quick two, three-minute break, let the department heads get out of here, and we'll continue with the meeting.
Great job, great job.
Thank you.
I'm excited to have you on. Yeah, I was excited to have you.
Like a sister of you. I mean, we all grew up together, so the thing we've all been through so much.
She's my friend.
Oh, she's the best.
Yes, she is. She thinks the world of you.
We're all on the street, and we think about when we start this stuff. It's crazy. I mean, the guys knew me when I had hair. And I lost it at 21. But we know each other so long. See, that's what Lowell has gone for. Well, the families are still all here, multiple generations. It's about what we say, if they're having kids or grandchildren here. I'm meeting kids that know their grandparents are great. You know? No, that's what it is. And I look at, like my wife, Elizabeth from Houston, she thinks Lowell is the coolest thing she's ever seen in her life. The downtown is so attractive. We just have to find a way, and other cities have the same issues, to get that stuff to come back to life, because physically, it's beautiful.
I know.
I mean, you can't build it better. I mean, it's just sitting there, like, you know, with the alleyways.
It's waiting for it to happen.
Yeah, and it'll do, and it's all set up, and it will happen again. It's just going to go through cycles. But people have no idea about it. I mean, we do, they do have an idea. By the way, nice hairdo.
Thank you.
You know, I'm saying, it's just so, Elizabeth, like I said, my wife, you know, when Julie came up and all, they called, "Oh, this is so cute." Cute, you always have to say cute.
Yes.
They'll come up with some ideas at some point, if they can take the roofs out of some, like at Paris, they put buildings on top.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's what they do in Paris, they put the glass building on top of the old buildings.
Oh, yeah, they did that. Chris Tally did that on Dutton Street.
Right, and you end up with all the apartments, and then they feed the stores downstairs. You don't need people coming all the time. That's what's going to happen.
Yeah, that's nice.
I mean, it's never going to get overcrowded, because it could take it. It is a walking city.
Yes.
You don't even need to drive. It always has been.
No, at my age, I need to drive.
I know, but you know what I'm talking about. The downtown, when we were kids, we'd take the bus and break in, drop off downtown. Yeah, everything is downtown. You can walk east, you know. Now, the other day, I took a walk over to get a coffee, and I hadn't walked there, Middle Street, through the alley, under the bridge thing there, by the entrance. This is stuff you just, it's so unique. It's just so unique, you know? When you look at the building there, they're for Lincoln. Rogers Toys, it's good stuff.
Welcome back to the council meeting. Mr. Clark, roll call.
Councilor Janess.
Here.
Councilor Leahy.
Here.
Councilor Mercier.
Here.
Councilor Noon. Councilor Robinson. Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Councilor Scott.
Here.
Councilor Yem.
Here.
Councilor Chow.
Here.
Councilor Dakota.
Here.
Councilor Getchere.
Here.
Nine present.
We're on the agenda, 4.1 motions. Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we are on the path on the suspension rule, I'd like to make a suspension of the rule to take item 4.10 out of order. There's a business owner here to speak on it, and they would like to go back to their business to run it.
Motion by Councilor Chow, seconded by Councilor Getchere to take 4.10 out of order. I'll approve, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. 4.10, Councilor Chow, request city manager work with department departments to restructure snow parking bans in the city so that there's less impact on business in the city. Seconded by Councilor Janess. Mr. Clark.
Richard Healy. How's everyone doing? Thank you, Councilor Chow, for putting this forward. I don't want to take up a lot of time.
Mr. Healy, just your name and record, name and address of the record, please.
Oh, Richard Healy. I live on Nicolet Street in the Highlands, but I have the keep on 110 Gorham Street in Lowell. I spoke to Councilor Chow a couple weeks ago about talking about this after we had the most recent parking ban. I believe it went into effect Saturday of that weekend at 6:00 PM. And I spoke to several other downtown business owners. Finbar is here from the old court with me. There are a few others that wanted to come, but ironically, the weather didn't agree with that. But I think last year, we tried to put this forward, and there was a snowstorm that actually canceled that city council meeting, so I guess it's better than last year. I know there's no solutions necessarily to this, we're just trying to minimize damage. That parking ban, when it went into effect at 6:00 PM that Saturday, when it did get lifted, I think it was Sunday, that ended up being about a 45% reduction in our overall numbers from the year prior. And, you know, small business in general is about peaks and valleys, right? Holidays are a pretty good peak for us, you know, ride that, and hopefully you survive the valley that is January, February, and everything else. But going into that with like a 45% reproduction sets me back a ways. And I know it's set a lot of other people back a ways. Again, this isn't something where I can stand up here and say that I have a solution for it. It's the weather in New England. It's about as unpredictable as can be. So I don't know, maybe, again, there aren't a lot of us here, we were planning on having a lot more, but usually for every person you'd see in the room from a small business, you can multiply that number by around 10, maybe more, in terms of our people who are affected by it as well. We have to look out for them. As much as I care about the roads being cleared and getting my son to school so I can do the job, I have to think about everybody who works for me and the fact that they also have bills due and everything else. Because the first thing that happens when we have a parking ban is that trickle-down effect where I have to cut staff in order to make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, I'm paying all my bills, which I don't feel comfortable about. So your hard decisions lead to my hard decisions and down the line. Ideally, I'd like it if we can talk about this at a further date, when we can get more small business owners here and I have a little more time to rally everybody. But I know, at least from the meeting, from your presentation just now, that you have a lot on your plate. And I don't have any solutions for it. You know, Lawrence does alternative parking, there are other cities that do that. I don't know the capability of our snow removal. I don't know necessarily the parking spaces we have. The only thing I can do is speak from my perspective and the business that I have to protect in the downtown. That's all I got, I think. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of everyone, and hopefully, in a couple of weeks, when we can get, you know, a few of the other business owners here, you'd like to hear from maybe someone other than me about it. Thank you.
Mr. Healy. Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the Speaker, and also Finbar from the old court for being here to show support for the request from all the main business owners in the city. You know, we all understand that when a snow ban policy is put into place, it takes considerations of both public safety and also to give the residents just enough time to remove their vehicles off the street or to garages or what have you. I think the concern here, if, you know, you probably cannot do this every single snowstorm or every single snow ban, but if there's anticipation of a forecast of a snow going to drop heavily much later on in the evening, and a snow ban ought to be placed so early on in the evening or during the day, just to give the entire city a time to take care of the vehicles. For the business owners, they're facing a different challenge, a different task, just asking the city manager to work with the property department, planners, maybe to take the business district into account and come up with some sort of plan so that way it doesn't hurt the small businesses in our city. Thank you.
Councilor Getchere.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Could we refer this to the Public Safety Subcommittee? That way, they can have a voice.
Motion by Councilor Getchere, seconded by Councilor Scott.
Thank you.
Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see the chief, Udon's here. Can I ask him to come to the lectern for one second?
If you like, Councilor.
I saw you in the corner there, I saw you. Chief, obviously, us being the fifth largest city in the state, how are other cities our size handling situations like this? Obviously, you know, Mr. Sheehan, Mr. Healy are here, and, you know, the restaurants that we have, we want to make sure that they're prospering. How does a Boston, a Worcester, Springfield do it?
I'd have to look into that and see what their protocols are, Councilor, and get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, there have been, in the history of the city alone, there have been some circumstances where we've just not allowed overnight parking at all, which tends to make it easier sometimes. I just want to just let everybody know that when we do the parking bans, it's not meant to be punitive, and when we're out there towing cars, it's not meant to be punitive. It's to get the city streets cleared and open. And I know my officers are out there knocking on a lot more doors than they are towing cars. And if there's any suggestions, I appreciate the referral to the Subcommittee, and we'd be happy to look at any suggestions. We certainly take into consideration the businesses, the events that are happening downtown, when any decision is made with the manager and the DPW Commissioner to put a snow ban in effect.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Councilor Chow for bringing this forward, and thank Richard and Finbar for coming down to speak on this and support it. I was going to refer to a Subcommittee, but I'm glad that my colleagues already handled that. I would just ask that we invite the members of the Downtown and Economic Development Subcommittee to that meeting as well. I don't think it needs to be a joint meeting, but just if we make sure folks on that Subcommittee come down too, because I think it's good to include us. But look forward to seeing where this goes. Thank you.
Any comments? All's in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. It'll also be sent to a Subcommittee. So thank you, gentlemen, for coming down. Back to the original motion, 4.1. Councilor Getchere, request city manager provide the city council with a list of all water main breaks repaired by outside contractors during FY '24, July 23 to current. The locations of each water main break, the date of each water main break, the size of each water main, and the cost of each repair. Seconded by Councilor Leahy. Councilor Getchere.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Each year, we go over this to try to see exactly where our resources are being used, because currently, we have roughly the same amount of employees as we've had in the past. And every water main break that I've seen lately, the employees from the Water Department are just shutting in the water, and we're calling in a contractor to do it at high expenses. So that's really the nature of this, is seeing where we're going with this. And if so, if these guys are not answering their phones, like in the past, they weren't doing this for overtime calls at night, then we need to restructure this, because with 12% increases in water and sewer, I think that we have to start dialing in and making sure that we're getting a bang for our dollar. Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. 4.2, Councilor Getchere, request city manager provide the city council with all work order requests for roof repairs at the Patoka Memorial School over the last year. An action taken, included date of request, date of response, and action taken. Seconded by Councilor Janess. Councilor Getchere.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I believe there was a video that was given with this. I don't know if it can be played right now or not, or I'm not sure.
I think it was just attached to the agenda item on the web. Well, there it is.
Mayor Rourke, this is just from one instance just recently from a rain, but this has been happening over and over again, and it's not just the gym areas outlined by the manager earlier, that the gym roof would be replaced by 2025, but every time it rains in that building, we come up with mold issues, we come up with, you know, wrecking other pieces. Now, we're buying tile after tile after tile in the building. And realistically, I'm wondering why or how many complaints have been filed on this through school dude or work orders have been put forward? And if there have been many, why haven't they been resolved? And have they been closed? Because what you're hearing out of the parents, the teachers, the administrators out of that building, and you know it as well as I do, Mr. Mayor, we're hearing the conditions are deplorable for the learning environment, and we're hearing that they've filed school dude after school dude, and nobody actually goes up on the roof, they don't see anybody. If you're going to go up on the roof, walk in the building and say hello. Walk in the building and say, "I'm here to look at something." Not just go up the back of the, if that's the case, I don't know if it is or not, but if you're going to go up the back of the building, take a look, and just go away, or if you're going to put a patch down, at least walk in and say, "Here's the situation, here's where we're at." Because some people are not seeing them, and they're saying it's not being done. So the question is, have these been closed? And we have to get the, if I were the principal of that school, I would never allow a kid in this building until it was all repaired. That's just me, but I don't have that power. But at some point, is a tipping point, where it was pouring in there the other day. So, and again, I do this for a living, I understand large roof leak, it's the response that really matters. So I really would love to see, Mr. Manager, just how many were filed, and, you know, what the responses were, and... And I think that even yourself, you'd probably be interested in this because we're all being told one thing on one side and we're being told something totally different on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to see this report too. I'm very interested in finding out what we can do to help the folks over at the Pataca Villa Memorial to resolve these issues. But the main reason I wanted to speak on this was I just wanted to mention that in both the HTML and the PDF versions of the agenda posted to the website, when you click the movie link to try and see the video that was attached, you get prompted for an Office 365 login. So, the public can't see that attached video. So, if we could just find a way going forward when we have attachments like this to make sure that folks in the public can view these, that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just also ask, I know you're asking, Council Getyou is asking for the work order repairs for the Pataca Memorial, but I did make a motion on December 5th that was approved by the council asking for updated reports of our work orders to be provided to the Facility Subcommittee. I don't know if I have to refile. I guess I might have to refile that motion at the next meeting or possibly we could modify this motion if Council Getyou is amenable for that, just that we get updates of all the open work orders.
Motion to amend by Council Scott, seconded by Council Getyou. Any other comments? All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. 4.3.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to bundle motions 4.3 through 4.7 inclusive?
Motion by Council Janess, seconded by Council Dakota. 4.3. Council Janess, request city manager to have property department explore the possibility of creating an emergency shelter for single adults experiencing homelessness, similar to what the city of Worcester is doing with their former RMV space. 4.4. Council Janess, request city manager to provide detailed reports to the council showing vehicle pedestrian, vehicle bicyclist, and other similar accidents over the past five years. 4.5. Council Janess, Council Noon, Council Leahy, request city manager to have property department provide a report of best practices for adding center of a member to the city council rules. And 4.6. Council Janess and Council Scott, request city manager to have property department evaluate the feasibility of creating a residential parking sticker program for the back central neighborhood. 4.7. Council Leahy, Council Janess, request city council discuss an approved procedure to fill a vacant council position open during the term. Does a couple of the motions already have co-sponsors, so it won't be a second. Council Janess.
There is a registered streak, Mr. Mayor, on number 4.5.
Sir.
Kendrick Del Obey.
Thank you to members of the council. I want to thank Council Janess, Council Leahy, and I want to congratulate Manager Golden on that amazing speech. I'm here tonight in support of this.
Sir, just to name and address the record, please.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I live at 128 Mount Washington Street. I'm here to share my support for this motion. It's been deeply concerning to witness a criminally indicted individual participating in municipal decisions. This not only reflects poorly on the city council as a whole, but undermines the trust of the community in our government. The residents of Lowell deserve representation that upholds the highest standards of integrity, especially when it comes to making crucial decisions that act the entire city. A significant number of Lowell residents have unfortunately experienced personal run-ins with sexual assault, domestic violence, including members of my own immediate family. Allowing an individual with an extensive criminal history.
Mr. Mayor, could I have a point of order? We're on censorship. Instead of pointing out with someone's personal history, can we stick to the piece where it says censorship, please?
Sir, just like, you know, just keep it.
If the counselor cannot recuse himself for the best interest of a city, it raises concerns about the effectiveness of our current system. I believe that the majority of other counselors should have the right to address such concerns to ensure the integrity and credibility of the city Lowell as a whole. Finally, I really want to strongly urge the city solicitor and the city manager's office to support and investigate this implementation. I think it's really important that we get up to date with other municipalities. I think this is something that should really be investigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just, these motions are all just being refiled because they expired at the end of the term. I have nothing more to add on it. But thank you to the Speaker for coming down.
Council Getyou.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the city solicitor, is that true, every motion that was not answered now has, does not need to be answered? They need to be all refiled from the last session?
Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so, I reviewed the city council rules here within the city and there's nothing that governs or addresses motions from one session carrying over to the new session. So, Robert, we would go to Robert's rules like we would in any other scenario. In Robert's rules, it specifically states, I actually have the section here. It's 217C. And it addresses when that change occurs, that any matters, well, it specifically says, "Any matter that is not finally disposed of," whenever that's the situation, the quote is, "They fall to the ground," which means they are no more and they would have to be refiled in this new session.
So, I got a lot of homework to do and go over all the motions and then put them all in again? Because once a motion is voted on from the body, now it goes to the manager's office. So, it is finalized at this level because the motion has been accepted. So, I'm trying to figure out why it wouldn't be answered when the motion is finalized at the Robert's rule stage. Now, it's in an administrative hand to come back, which is not part of Robert's rules. It's a function of the city's operation. So, that's what the question comes down to. But if that's the case, then I just have to go through my motions and just put, refile all of them. So, I think we're doing double the work in government. But if that's what you say is the only way to do it, I've never seen any public body do this. But I will actually ask other communities this answer.
Council Scott.
I would also, I'm sorry, I would just also add the same concerns. I mean, we never did it on the school committee for two terms. I know they carry over the motions. They're on tomorrow night's agenda as unanswered motions from the previous term. They're still on there. And to me, you know, when we voted the body as a whole, it seems that that was the finalization of the vote. Right. And then now, we're just waiting for the administrative piece to be handled. So, I'm not really sure why that would be, you know, up again to be refiled as another motion. So, I also have concerns about that. I will, of course, defer to the solicitor. That's his, you know, his opinion on it. But it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. I mean, we would stop making motions back six months prior to your term ending to make sure that they all got answered. I mean, that wouldn't make any sense. So, I'd appreciate just looking into it further. Thank you.
Council Mercia.
Yes, thank you. I echo exactly what Counselor Scott is saying. I have never heard of this before. I thought, let's say, a month ago, if I made a motion and it wasn't answered yet, then I didn't think it expired. I never heard of that knowledge years that I've been here. I've never, ever, ever heard that. If the manager is busy and he can't handle it a month ago because he's too inundated with requests and motions, then maybe next month he'll handle it. That's what I always thought. I never heard of this. So, now we can expect next Tuesday to come in here and Counselor Getyou has 45 motions. I'm looking forward to that. But I don't know if that's what the rules are. I never heard of it. That's my opinion.
Council Leahy.
Thank you. I don't know if we do it now or after we vote on this, but I did want to send 4.7 to the Rules Committee Subcommittee. And then also, we could take up, as the solicitor said, adjust our own rules to say that when we put motions on, they carry on to the next session, that those motions carry over. So, we can make those adjustments at a Rules Subcommittee.
Motion by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Mercia.
Yes. Can I just comment on the 4.7? Request the city council discuss and approve a procedure to fill a vacant council seat during the term. For example, this is a very good motion because I really am curious as well. Let's say that I ran at large and I decided that in the middle of the term I had a health problem and I couldn't continue. I automatically thought that the next person in line, which would have been Corey Belanger, and I think he would have made an excellent city councillor, I thought maybe he would take my place if that would happen. Please don't do that, dear Jesus. But anyway, so, but in the case of, let's say, you, Mr. Mayor, that you did not have any opposition, what would we do in a case like that? So, this is a very timely, very important motion that should be discussed at the Rules Subcommittee. I think this is the way to go. We need to know. Thank you.
Motion made to put the 4.7 to the Rules Subcommittee. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Council Getyou.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor. Who asked you for a ruling on whether they carried over or not? So, how do we just come out of the sky with this? Who asked you for that ruling?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel, it's my experience that at the end of a session, at the end of biennium, things start anew. That's how it happens in the legislature. And it'd be in the situation if a councillor were to leave, if we did carry over, which I don't have, I don't mind either way, what we do. But in the council rules, it doesn't state that you can do that. Under Robert's rules, they fall to the floor and they're refiled. There's a number of reasons for that. And one, in this instance, we have a councillor that has left. And would those also be refiled, excuse me, would they also be carried over? And in some aspects, there were multiple signing, multiple pieces that were, they're similar. So, it's really just a function that of where I came from, at the end of the biennium, the end of the session, they actually fall to the floor. And that was the only reason for this. And I was asking what would happen with the 700 we answered and the, I think it was 180 that were left over. So, that was me asking that question to find out how we would start the new session of this council in 2024.
I don't know if this is the proper time to ask this, but through you to the city solicitor, is it a proper time to make a motion that we amend the city council rules and allow motions to carry over from one to the other? Can we do that right now?
As far as I don't.
Through you to.
Procedurally, no, Counsel. The amendment of the city council rule, they have to bring it to the body. They have to discuss it and bring it back on for a vote.
Wouldn't that be what the motion's gonna do?
It'd be a way of a motion next week and we refer it out and it's gotta be on the table. I forget what it was in the rules, but there's a procedure to change those city rules like we just went through for the majority of them a couple of weeks ago, months ago.
So, because it's a city council rule, it will have to wait till it's on the agenda before it can be heard, rather than a motion out loud that could be done tonight? That's what you're saying, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Solicitor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Per the City Council Rule 33, it actually has to go in front of the Rules Subcommittee and then come back. And there does have to be a one-week notice for all the councils to have it, but it has to go in front of the Rules Subcommittee first.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? First, we have 4.3 to 4.7. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. All form, motion is pass. With 4.8, which is kicked next week, since we're gonna have to make a motion here. 4.9. Council Chow, request city manager update the status of the renovations of school playgrounds and when they'll be completed. Seconded by Council Yum, Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past couple of years, I've had the opportunity to visit many of the schools and take a look at the playgrounds. The good news is, it was not in today's state of the city's speech, but I know there's a lot of, you know, the school buildings itself, the HVAC, there's a lot of improvement, renovations, a plan in the works. And the same go for the playgrounds. There's a lot of playgrounds at the school that have been started already. And on a day like this, on a winter day like this, you know, I can imagine a lot of kids, they're looking forward to play in the newly built playground once done. And hopefully, that many of the playgrounds will be completed by spring. So, when they get to the warm weather, they can look forward to go outside, play all these nice new playgrounds. You know, all these playgrounds in the works. So, if you can get a schedule to see when they're done, hopefully, if the plans are delayed for so many more months or years, hopefully, the administration can look for a way to push it up in the schedule. Thank you.
Any other comments? All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. 4.10. All taken care of. 4.11. Council Chow, request city manager work the property department and the LRTA to explore the possibility of allowing the businesses that they exchange the option of leasing and/or validating patron parking in the LRT garage. Seconded by Council Yum, Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion is straightforward. The owners of this business wanna figure out how to be more inviting and more welcoming to their patrons that go through their business, they're willing to pay for it, just to make it easier for the customers to willing to validate the parking space and things like that. So, asking the city managers to work with the proper department, the leaders of LRT as well, to come up with a plan to make this happen. Thank you.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I'm sensitive to the needs of the businesses over there and working with the LRTA, I'm a little worried about the precedent of asking the city manager to work with businesses and another government organization that we don't have oversight over. I don't know what my colleagues think, but I just, you know, I worry that, you know, six months from now, we're gonna be asking you to talk to UML about one of their garages or something similar. And I just, I worry about that going forward because this is really a neighbor discussion, from what I see. And, you know, maybe we can give somebody a phone number, but I don't know how, in the middle of these discussions, the city should really be. It's just my concern.
Council Yum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like this motion a lot. This is just to help businesses. If you go to Boston Chinatown, they have similar kind of validated, you park the garage, the first hours, you validate it, and then you get a discount in a way to help boost the businesses. So, I think it's a great motion. It should look into. It shouldn't be affecting any other institution except to help the patron of the local businesses. Thank you.
Council Chow.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Just to respond to Counsel Janess's comment, just asking the city manager to have a discussion to facilitate the relationship. And we do this all the time, these organizations in the city, they're the stakeholders, they're partners in the city. And I remember that Counsel Janess, in the past, Councilor Janess, in the past, had made motions for the city manager to work with different organizations as well. These are interested parties in our city, we have responsibility, we are elected officials to help make sure that things go smooth in our city, where people need help, they can come ask us for help. We are gonna start putting limitations on what we can do, what we cannot do, and understand some provisions. There's a lot of things that might be out of purview, but I don't think helping our local businesses, organizations like LRTA, who are partners and stakeholders in the city, I don't think that's out of line, what we should be doing as elected officials and as for the administrators for the city as well.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do think this is a little bit concerning, as far as just, you know, us into, you know, doing this with the LRTA, where we're not the responsible party for the garage. But I guess my only way around that, maybe for me, would be whether or not we're really looking to help all businesses, and whether or not looking at a validation program kind of across the board would make more sense. And that, that would make sense for us to also reach out to the LRTA, because I'm just thinking there's businesses downtown that might be interested in a discounted validation program, where they actually pay, they pay us, you know, the city for the parking for their customers, and then, you know, we give them a discounted rate in exchange, or something similar to that. But possibly, you know, if you'd be willing to amend it, I don't know, so that we look at validation in all the garages, to help all the businesses, then I would be in support of it.
Is there a motion, Councilor?
That would be a motion.
To?
To look at validation for businesses, a validation program for businesses across the city.
Motion by Councilor Scott to amend, seconded by Councilor Chow. Councilor Chow?
Mr. Mayor, we still have, have the motion on the floor to be voted, but I do not mind making, accepting the council's request to add on for validation system for businesses throughout the city, with the city garage as well. And for clarity, that the businesses at this location, they are not asking for, for discount, they are just simply trying to be more inviting, you know, I think it makes sense to have discussion with the city garages as well, and the downtown businesses, where maybe the garages, you know, if, if the businesses will have a system of validating parking for the customers, that would encourage the customers to go park in the garage, more so than try to drive around the blocks two, three times, looking for, for, for a meter. So, I'd be happy to amend that. Again, the businesses at the Thorndale Exchange are not looking for discounts, it's just a simpler way for the business owners are taking care of their patrons.
There you go, Councilor. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, I think that's a great idea, I think that's something we could move forward with. But in regards to the LRTA, being that it's not our garage, you know, if it's okay with the council, just introduce folks and see what they can figure out, where the city wouldn't be participating in any way, shape, or form with collecting any of the revenue, or something like that. But maybe just allowing, making the introduction to Mr. Bradley, and Counselor, if you could give me the, the owner's name of the company, the organization, we can make that happen. But to follow up on what Councilor Scott is saying, it'd be an opportunity for us to look at something we have kind of kicked around a little bit, to see how we can get people to utilize the garages more downtown. So, maybe that's an opportunity we can, we can expand upon, if that's the wish of the council.
Great. Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the way that I see this issue. We have businesses in the city, these businesses happen to be abutters of the LRTA. I have no problem with Councilor Chow's motion, because the way that I look at this is, I would do whatever I could as a city to help a business, and the reason I say this is because this city is formed on many, many partnerships, although we do not own that garage, LRTA is a partner with us, and I would think it would be only fair to say, we wanna support the businesses that are abutting the LRTA. Could it be possible that you could give them a discount, or give them a place to park, so that they can utilize the services of the businesses? That's what it's all about, trying to help businesses, if they ask for a particular request, I think it's only fair that we ask. I don't see a problem with that.
Councilor Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I just wonder how the accounting system would work with all these businesses having a validation system, and now, how would that work with the city of Lowell's auditing system and everything? How would that cross over to the CFO? And then how do you mesh everything together, so that, you know, someone's validating something, so they're saying someone's there, and how's the payment process? So, I think that that's really my concern, when you're starting putting multiple, multiple businesses in, and now, someone can get anybody's validation system and use it, and say, "Okay, they were here, but where are they?" And then it could be all question. How much time would this take, up of city employees' time, I guess, at the same time? I, I don't disagree with the premises of Councilor Chow's piece, but I'm just worried about the inner workings of the back and forth, that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Dakota?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an excellent motion by Councilor Chow, but I do have the concerns of Councilor Janess, but are we opening up Pandora's Box here by saying, because I know Merrimack Street, we've seen an increase in number of businesses that are opening? Do we start validating a John Street Garage? And, I mean, is fair, is fair, or? That's my question.
Of all points, all's in favor say aye, opposed, motion passes. Onto seven petitions that has been withdrawn. 7.2, National Grid, request installation of one J.O. pole at development at 733 Broadway Street. Also, 7.3, National Grid, request installation of underground electric conduit for service to development at 733 Broadway Street. A motion to be referred to a public hearing on January 30th, 2024, by Councilor Leahy, seconded by Councilor Janess. Any announcements? Councilor Mercia?
I don't have an announcement, but I have a concern as to the subcommittees that you're initiating for all of us. Would we have a list in the future, just go by?
They'll email it out to everybody, but we'll, we'll ask us, we'll get a list out to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. If you want to hang it out, he's, he's still here, so, again, I'll tell you before you leave this evening.
It's funny that you mention that. He's making a copy now, and he's gonna distribute them, so we can put them in our desks, or whatever.
Mayor Leahy's taking care of that, Councilor.
Thank you. And just want a quick announcement. I just wanted to thank the administration. Today was a tough storm, and I think everybody handled it well. They're still out there now, still snowing. But one more request, I think we did a great job on the sidewalks, but again, can we emphasize to the business owners that they need to be responsible? We can't do it all for them, so please shovel in front of your business. Thank you.
Great. Anything else? motion adjourned by Councilor Scott, seconded by Councilor Yam. Good night.